Good evening. I hope everybody can hear me once again. We're very much appreciative of the school board for the sound system that certainly has improved over the previous years. Once again, thank you. This is the Towne-Pownell Town Meeting. As I like to say each time, this meeting is for the residents of Pownell. If somebody wishes to speak who was not a resident of Pownell, after identifying yourself, if there is any objection to having you speak, a member of the town should express that concern. Otherwise, I'm sure we'd very much like to hear what people have to say. What I'll do is read through a few things, ask for some questions. We'll go through the articles. I know there are several items that the select board would like to bring to the attention of the people here. Also, I've asked the auditors to give a brief explanation or answer questions concerning the annual report. So I think we'll approach it that way. Would you like to start now? The inhabitants of the Towne-Pownell qualified to vote in the town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Pownell Elementary School in said town on Monday, March 3, 2014, at 7:30 in the afternoon. On Tuesday, March 4, 2014, the Australian ballot voting at the Pownell Central Firehouse to vote on the following issues and candidates. These are the candidates that people will be voting on. Moderator, one year; selectman, three years; selectman, one year; selectman, one year; lister, three years; auditor, three years; delinquent, tax collector, three years; town agent, one year; grand jury, one year; grand jury, one year; trustee of public monies for two years; trustee of public monies for two years. Any questions on that? I know Steve wanted to make a comment on that.
Okay, a question that was asked earlier. These positions for selectmen's positions, three-year and one-year, this is a time position? It is not a position for chairman, vice chair, clerk, etc. It is only for selectmen. It is a time period. The board, when it reorganizes, chooses the chairman and the vice chair and so on. The question had been brought up, some people thought if it was a three-year term, you were automatically the chairman. That is not the case.
The floor meeting on March 3, 2014, will open at the Pownell Elementary School at 7:30 PM for Articles 1 through 2, and then stand adjourned until 7 o'clock PM at the Pownell Central Firehouse for the Australian ballot voting on Articles 3 through 14. That obviously will take place on the 4th of March. Polls will be opened at 7 o'clock AM until 7 o'clock PM at the Pownell Central Firehouse. Registered to vote, you must apply by 2 PM on Wednesday, February 26, 2014, if you want to vote at the town meeting. Absentee ballots are available if you'll be out of town on town meeting day, or ill or disabled. Apply to the town clerk. Now, we have the two articles that we are voting on tonight. Article 1, "To Hear Reports of Town Officials and Take Action Therein." Got a motion to accept that. Thank you. Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Article 2, "To See If the Voters Will Authorize Its Treasurer to Receive Taxes Until They Become Delinquent." Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Very good. It passes. All in favor? Good. Now, we have... I want to wait through it. Now, we have the different articles that will be voted on tomorrow. I'll read the article, and if anybody has a comment, please raise your hand and identify yourself, and we'll try to answer the questions that you pose. The election of all officers required by law. Article 3, "Shall the voters appropriate $809,440 for the general expenses of the town, of which $508,526.64 is to be raised by taxes, and $84,837.36 from prior year's unassigned surplus funds." Article 5, "Shall the voters appropriate $784,860 for the maintenance and construction of highways of the town, of which $558,142.84 shall be raised by taxes, and $92,517.16 from prior year undesigned surplus funds." Article 6, "Shall the voters appropriate $3,000 towards support of the Senior Citizen Center." I noticed in the pamphlet that was asked out that many of these organizations requesting funds have a short explanation of what they do and how the funds are used. Article 7, "Shall the voters appropriate $440 for the support of disabled Vermonters by the Vermont Center of Independent Living." Article 8, "Shall the voters appropriate $1,000 for the supportive services rendered to the town by the Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Volunteer Center." Article 9, "Shall the voters appropriate $1,200 for the supportive services rendered to the town by the Southwestern Vermont Area Council on Aging." Article 10, "Shall the voters appropriate $15,000 for the operation and maintenance of the Solomon Wright Library." Yes? Can everybody hear me? Why don't you identify yourself? Do you need some more?
I am a board member of Solomon Wright Library, and I encourage everybody to please support the library. It's a great resource. And one more thing, this spring, I encourage everybody to check out the new plantings because last summer and fall, a lot of volunteers put in a lot of hours putting in many shrubs and flowers, and we're really looking forward to spring for a variety of reasons, but that being one of them. So we appreciate your support. Thanks very much.
Could you also, just as I mentioned about your Wi-Fi additions, if you go to that part?
Yes. There are 52 institutions throughout the state that have been given, well, given, they've been helped with their fiber optic system. So that would be libraries, that would be schools, that would be universities, and Pownell is fortunate enough to have the highest quality, state-of-the-art fiber optic system. So Wi-Fi access at the library today is as fast as anywhere in the state. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your questions. Article 11, "Shall the voters appropriate $60,000 towards the operation and maintenance of the Pownell Fire Prohibitive Association." Protected, I'm sorry. Association. Yes?
Chief of the Chief of the Pownell Fire Department, what do you think in regard to the report? About the year and what would continue? Thank you.
Somebody asked me, and I couldn't answer, how many fires you people are called to put out or investigate during the year?
We had ninety-some called last year. What it varies in the year, though. Ninety to a hundred?
Ninety to a hundred calls. Thank you very much. So we appreciate your efforts. Now, Article 12, "Shall the voters appropriate for the operation and maintenance of the Pownell Valley Fire Department consisting of the East Pownell Fire Company, Pownell Center Company, and the North Pownell Fire Company, the sum of $52,000." 13, "Shall the voters appropriate $19,500 towards the Toronto Valley Fire Department Fire Truck and Equipment Fund?" Yes?
My name is Walter Clark, I'm the Chief of the Pownell Valley Fire Department.
Can everybody hear him all right? No, why don't you come up and grab the microphone?
My name is Walter Clark. I'm the Chief of the Pownell Valley Fire Department, and I'd like to thank everybody for the support and everything that you guys do to keep us going. We run out of three stations, and we're on a very tight budget, and I'd just like to thank you all very much, and the members and myself.
Thank you. Article 14, "Shall the voters appropriate $2,500 towards the Pownell Valley Fire Association Community Fireworks Program." Jim?
Thank you very much.
Jim Winchester? Is everybody here? Why don't you come up here, Jim? Have a good look at you, too. Don't recognize you without the apron.
I do, too. I think the Pownell Valley Fire brings out the best in the community. It really does. Community is the word, and there's people in this room that for years have taken money from, they've given to me, they want to remain anonymous. I won't rat you out, but I will say it's a pleasure to live in a community with such nice people, and thank you very much for anything you do for us.
Thank you, Jim. Article 15, "Shall the voters appropriate $30,000 for the Pownell Rescue Squad towards ambulance replacement, insurance, operation, and maintenance." 16, "Shall the voters appropriate ... excuse me, I didn't see a hand. Oh, yes.
I'm Leo Hagerty, I'm Chief of the Pownell Rescue Squad.
Why don't you come up and grab a microphone just to make it official? Got to make the long walk.
Hi, I'm Leo Hagerty. I'm Chief of the Pownell Rescue Squad. I'd like to thank the members of Pownell for our continued support, and just to let you know, our squad wouldn't work and continue to operate without your help. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We all appreciate your efforts. Article 16, "Shall the voters appropriate $500 for the supportive services rendered to the town by the Project Against Violent Encounters." 17, "Shall the voters appropriate $5,000 towards the support of the Oak Hill Children's Center?" You do need to know.
Thank you. Yes, I'm the President and the Boarding Director of the Oak Hill Children's Center, and I'm here to ask you for your support so we can continue with the early childhood education in our community, which helps our working parents. And it's this year we celebrated 42 years of early care and education in Pownell. Our mission, as it always has been, is to support the needs of families by providing quality childcare in a stimulating and nurturing learning environment. Thank you. And if you need to know more about us, we have a newsletter you can pick up on the board over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Article 18, "Shall the voters appropriate $2,000 towards the support of Bennington Project Independence." 19, "Shall the voters appropriate $2,500 towards support of the program and services provided to the town by the Tutorial Center." 20, "Shall the voters appropriate $11,000 towards the support of the Visiting Nurse Association Hospice." 21, "Shall the voters appropriate $200 for the support of Vermont Greenup." 22, "Shall the voters appropriate $500 for the support of the Bennington County Conservation District." 23, "Shall the voters appropriate $500 towards the support of the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless Inc. Incorporated." 24, "Shall the Towne-Pownell vote to raise approximately and expend the sum of $2,000 for the support of the Brennington Free Clinic, a program of Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services Incorporated, a not-perforated entity under the Code of 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code." Yes?
Um, I don't know.
Yes, you better. Give your name, please.
Hello, I sit on the board for G-Bex, and I would like to thank you for your support in prior years for the free clinic. We had 780 clinical visits last year, of which 8% were through from Pownell, and I'm Lisa McDougal. I live on Sierra Hill Road, so thank you for your support. We really appreciate it.
Could you say what time that clinic is open and services are available?
The clinic is open every Thursday evening, and you must call to make an appointment if you would wish to go.
And they would get that telephone number where?
Um, I have a packet here. It's probably online. You can call 802-379-0149.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to now open the floor for general comments. I know that Steve wanted to say something.
Okay, as I've sat on the board for eight years now, this year's been as interesting as some of the other years passed. One of the larger differences and things that struck everybody in this area this year was the loss of another select board member. In my eight years that I've been on the board, we've lost three members. Dale Palmer recently, Donald Stone, and Dan Proudham. Just before my prior getting on the board, Alan Strobridge passed. These are people that devoted a lot of time to their community, gave their all to this town. They worked very hard for us, and they did do a lot of stuff stepping forward where nothing else was right in harm's way a lot of the time, but they did do their best on this. I would just like this moment to show the appreciation to these people that have served us in the past, give a short moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. On a brighter subject, we have a lady that's been serving the town since 1981. She's not present with us tonight because of health reasons, but she's joined the listers 1981, and she retired this year. Another very devoted person to the Towne-Pownell. Certainly somebody that everybody's recognized when they go into the town office. Being she is not here this evening, in appreciation for her, from her friends, her coworkers, from the town, I'd like to give this to our son Jared if he would receive it for it, and give it to her with our thanks, and wish her well on watching us from the outside. With that, I'd like to thank all of you being here, and we will open the floor for comments from this point. Very good.
I'm Rosemary Pelletier, and I'll keep my comments short because I want to talk about multiple things. Every year I come and I sort of just fill you in on the Friends of Pownell. This year, in addition to doing the Spirit of Sharing that Peter Hopkins has organized with Erica Donovan and others at the school, couldn't do that without the people at the school working with the families. We did that project, and also this year, we equipped every single classroom and some of the special services rooms with digital cameras so that students can actually take their work as they do it in the class, put it under this camera, project it for the entire class, and have the class comment on it. And I think, I'm here at the school every Tuesday this year because I'm in the Big Brother and Big Sister program also, and so I run into some of the teachers, and that's been a real game changer, I think, in terms of the classroom and the dynamics of the classroom. It allows students to be much more actively engaged. So those are two things we did through the Friends of Pownell. Since I mentioned Big Brothers and Big Sisters, I would highly recommend to anybody who has a day when they have a free lunch period to come to the school, volunteer. It's done through the United Counseling Program, the Big Brother and Big Sister Program, but it's called a Lunch Mentor. And what you do is you get paired with an individual student, and you come once a week, have lunch with them, and then get to visit with them in their normal recess time. And it's a great, it's just a wonderful experience, and that idea of mentoring can make such a difference. The other thing I want to talk about is, and it came through the same kind of organization, I think, that gave the library the wireless. A number of years ago, the Vermont Rural Development Council came and did a large conversation with us about the strengths of our community, and we picked certain projects, etc., to work on. And one of the things that came out of that and is now statewide is what is called the Front Porch Forum. And what it is, is it's an online communication bulletin board for people within a particular community. So for Pownells, it's Pownell-specific. And right now, it's all free. I think there's 190-some people in this community who are part of that bulletin board, that conversation. And I would like to encourage everybody else who has a computer at home to join it. It's a way to send all sorts of messages, like, you know, I see a stray dog here, if you're missing a dog, you know, give me a call, or, you know, I've got extra of these things if you want them, or make announcements. Linda Hall uses it wonderfully to present all the information that is going on at the library. I have, you have to sign up for it, it's free, it's very simple, and I've got these orange sheets that I'll put over on that table, and they've got a little tear-off thing at the bottom, which is the web address you go to to sign up. So I'd encourage you to do that. It's a way of building community, and like Jim Winchester said, that's what it's all about. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is a new initiative. It's called Hour for Our Community. That bulletin over there, and I'll go stand over there at the end of the meeting if people want more information. But what this is, is a membership organization that is basically every member's, it's to encourage people to share their skills with each other, and for us as a community to meet each other's needs. We used to be able to do that easily because we knew we lived in smaller groups. But so what this organization does is if you're a member, you simply list the things you're willing to do for your neighbors, and you also list the things you would like somebody to do for you. And it's a bartering system, but instead of having to find a person who has something you want, that they want something from you, you do something for any member in the group, and then that entitles you to ask any member in the group to do something for you. And it's based on an hour of service is worth an hour of back. So everybody's treated equal, and everybody's skills and talents are valued the same. An hour of your time is worth an hour of somebody else's time. So if you're interested in that, I have some flyers here, and I'll be over there and answer some questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Steve wanted to add one thing to his other comments.
There, you think you'd get used to this after a few years. I announced that we had a lister that had served us from 1981 until current, and I'm sure all of you know who that is, but I didn't announce her name. So I'd be a little bad on that, and I apologize. It was Doris Slowly. I'm sorry, Jared, I think everybody recognized you, but I did not say Doris' name, and I apologize. Doris Slowly, 1981 until this year.
Are there any other comments that people would like to make? If not, Ray? Oh, sorry, Jim?
Hello, Johnny, ladies. I guess before we end tonight, I'd like to find out a little bit more information, if you could present it to the townspeople, on where we're leading towards this town office. I have a bad gut and my feelings of how this whole process has begun with land being purchased without any participation of the townspeople really being involved, and wondering if that was the right decision to make at that time. Unfortunately, it happened. This deed was signed, we owned the land, and I know a lot of things have gone on since that time. We spent a lot of money since that time. I'm seeing in the budget that we're putting earmarking monies aside, but now as the boards are going to turn over year after year, I'm a little concerned of just what is the philosophy that we have, or what is the process that you guys have set that we'll end up with a new town office? I know we need a town office. Where we need it doesn't have to be at a certain place that overlooks Pownell because it's a historical site. We've had offers of possibly a building. I'm not sure where that stands. I just don't want to get to the point of spending money on something that is not going to work out for the town.
But who would like to address this?
I'm not sure how to answer that totally for you, Jim, except we've got what I personally consider an excellent piece of land at a reasonable price, very reasonable. We've done a lot of spinning our wheels to get off the ground with it. I believe we have moved forward finally. We have hired, sent a letter up to this contractor, architects, to do a design study for us at a very reasonable rate. We've spent many hours interviewing and talking amongst board members on the town office committee. We've come up with what we... If I said the worst thing, if we lost every cent worth we've put into these architects, it wouldn't be the last thing we've ever done or worse, because we got a reasonable deal. We have people that seem very interested in doing a design factor for us at a very reasonable fee, and we interviewed several. We put money away toward this new town office because regardless, I've heard the same scuffle on other buildings being available. I don't believe there's another building available that's going to be turnkey for this town. So no matter what you find for a building, what it's offered to us at, for whatever price, there's going to be a certain price to pay to turn it into a municipal office that these people can work out of, and I believe you'll find it's going to be cost-wise very expensive. I think we're on the right track with the new building. We're in the center of town, which from our town clerk we had years ago tells me two feet off the center of our building is dead center of Pownell. Maybe that doesn't mean an awful lot in one respect, but I think in the future it does. I do believe we need a new building. I think we're going in the right direction. We're sailing in a way where we're not bankrupting anybody. We're trying to put money away as we can budget it and move this forward as fast as we can at the same time.
Are there any members, other members of the board, Ron, would you like to say anything
All right. People all over the way. I was, I don't like doing anything without the approval of the townspeople. I said that right from the beginning. There should be a vote. It shouldn't be done by a few officials. Now, in my opinion, as soon as we can afford it. We all know we need it for town hall. I'm all for that. But I'm not going to see taxes go up. They're high, sky-high now, as far as I'm concerned. But I want, before we move an inch further, I want a vote in the town on how we're going to proceed. That's the way I look at it. Anybody else want to talk about it?
Anybody else like to make comment on that? If not, I think, well, I know there's been some concern or some confusion over the town report, and I've asked Ray, I think you're going to do the top of it, Ray, to go over those areas that... that I know concern you, some of you. Ray?
I hope everybody can hear me. Betty and I will attempt to answer all and any questions that we can. We'd like to first off thank the sixth grades here at the school. They helped us a lot on this town report. Very cooperative, thank the principal. And to that point, thank them. Now, I'd like to, if we can, if you bear with me. We had a letter that was addressed to the editor and some individuals signed it, so I'd like to call on those people first so that they can get their comments out. Casey Madison?
If anybody would like to speak something to you, but don't feel as if you have to. My name is Casey Madison. I signed that letter because there was, we put everybody's wages in there and there was a few that didn't make it. One was the E-91 Board Coordinator, no, the, yes, E-91.
Kibble, yep.
That didn't make it in. That's the reason, much more the reason why I signed it. And I'm sure that there's other.
Can't hear you. Just play the mic up. It closed.
That was one of the things that was not in there and that's basically the reason why I signed it.
You're correct. That's an oversight on our part. Right. That's Dorothy Kibble and we do have, we put a couple of their wages here. We have the other reports. Who else? Anyone else, please?
Ray, my name is Darcy Crewn.
Yes, why don't you come up here, Dorothy?
And I did, I did address your comments at my meeting last Thursday night. That's his main department partner.
My name is Darcy Crewn. I'm the Waste Water Chief Operator in Powell and I did address your comments on page three at my meeting on Thursday and I would like a response to that. It's Powell Partner, so.
I didn't.
I'm sure you have Kathy. We don't.
I think, I think it's inappropriate that we take the time to read this. It's a full page. We did mention about your.
Well, it's not, it's not actually inappropriate. It actually addresses comments that you made in your report. It has nothing to do with documents that you got from a computer.
I'll read it out.
They're from your mouth.
I'll read it out loud.
Thank you.
The annual town report is an important media hit, relaying factual information to the taxpayers prior to town meeting and election day. Unfortunately, this year, town employees and officials find ourselves very concerned. Many inaccuracies have been filed in this year's report, which were published by our elected auditors. The comments I would like to address this evening were made on page three of the 2013 Annual Town Report. They were made by elected auditors Ray Shields and Betty Baker. These comments can be filed below in boldface. My responses are in a tablet print. We, the elected auditors, this is our words, were unsuccessful in having the SORRAS commissioners, the select board, prepare a timely budget for the wastewater operation and maintenance. That is true. We approach the.
Please continue reading. Continue reading the facts are actually below that.
First, it is not the job of the elected auditors to determine when the wastewater operation and budget is to be prepared. This is determined by the select board, who in fact have a board-approved policy in placing, stated when the budget is drafted. See attached.
And I have that.
This policy states the following. The annual wastewater budget is prepared February, March period for the upcoming fiscal year. We have tried to change that. That is correct.
Right. It's not your decision to change that. It's up to the board. We, no. The facts.
We went to the board.
The facts.
We made a recommendation that we would like to put that budget in the town report. They chose not to.
Please, I'm sorry. I would like you to keep reading because the facts are actually part of that document and I have the proof here to back it all up. But please, you don't, you can request a change, but that doesn't mean that the wastewater budget was submitted in a untimely manner. That's, that is not correct. That is not a correct statement according to the policy in place at this time. Is that right?
The policy in place at this time is signed June 27th of this past year. Correct? I looked it up.
Yes.
Wait a minute. We have asked, we have asked the select board.
You have asked.
The SORRAS commissioners to move it up.
Please, can you please continue reading because there's more to that. You'll find it for me.
He'll, he'll continue reading or, I think it'd be good if you sat down.
Okay. I'm sorry. He's trying to get the facts though. He keeps speaking.
Yes, well, he'll read it. I think that's the best thing.
Therefore, the yearly wastewater operation and maintenance budget is always prepared in a timely manner. It is prepared in February, March of every year according to town policy. Fact, the wastewater operation and management budget is not voted on by the taxpayers. It is supported by the users of the system. Therefore, the budget is not subject to submission in the town report. The orders are aware of this fact via information provided at a taxpayer-funded seminar they both attended on October 22nd, 2013, as well as information provided to them by the selectmen at the November 13, 2013 weekly select board meeting, as well as having the commissioners try to curb the overtime at the wastewater treatment facility, which is running at nearly 10%. The orders were informed in April 25th, 2013, meaning that there would be unbudgeted overtime costs reflected in the 2013, 2014 fiscal budgets. This was due to the fact that the elected auditors, Ray Shields and Betty Baker, told the board that the wastewater workers were violating FSLA rules by donating time. We had no choice but discharge for all our overtime. Another important fact, equipment fails, day and night, weekends and holidays, equipment fails. It is our job, our duty to the users of the system to keep the systems up and running. Overtime is a reality in the wastewater field. We are on call 24/7 without exception, whether it's a pump station or a call for a user, emergencies occur and we must respond. Darcy Crewn. Now, can I respond to some of this? First off, we have tried. The overtime is running near 10%. I believe it was in, and we have a letter into the select board, April of May, April and May of 2012. We proposed to the select board, the SORRAS commissioners, that they put the individuals down there that were licensed on staggered days. One would have Saturday, Sunday off, the other one would have Sunday, Monday. That would eliminate bringing people in for this overtime. That has to be done.
Wait, just let me finish.
That would cut the overtime that's down there approximately 30%. Just, just, let me, right. No one should be congratulated for working off the clock and not recording their hours properly. No one. It is against FSLA and whether you have contracts, you have to abide by law.
Okay, do you, would you like to respond to that? I don't want to have this become a whole school. Go ahead, it's your turn.
Well, I.
Why don't you come up here so people?
Well, my party addressed these comments at the past meetings.
I'm sorry.
I was really in circles.
If you'd like to make a comment, I'm welcome to come up and make a comment.
I think you're really in circles.
So I would address that as I, as it follows. How, what is your experience in the wastewater field? Since you are suggesting staffing recommendations, I would like to know how many wastewater treatment facilities that you have run? Okay. I've been doing this for 20 years, so I have a pretty good idea of what the staffing level should be. If you want your wastewater treatment facility staffed appropriately, please listen to me and not to, not to write. I'm not being rude. I'm just trying to explain that you, I am in this position because people rely on me to make good decisions for the people of the town, for your best welfare and to make sure that these systems stay online. That's what I'm trying to do. So I would ask you to listen to my recommendations. Thank you.
As being on the board for the last few years, this is a multimillion-dollar project that we started down there. It is run by two people in the system, part-time. This is a very serious operation. You go into your homes, you use your facilities, you expect them to work. You have several pump stations, I think there's what, 19, 23, something like this throughout the town, including this building right here, which never functioned from the day it was built. This is now functioning. But if the pump station goes down out there, it does not function. This is a reason we have qualified people. It's not just somebody coming in off the street to punch a clock, stay eight hours and go home. These people are 24/7. This has to work around the clock. Now, for a new plant, it should run without too many difficulties and it does, but it's not new anymore. We've got a few years under our belt. There are breakdowns, there are electrical components that go wrong. These have to be addressed immediately. The problems we have had at that pump station, by the time this select board finds out about it, they've either been fixed or they're in the process of being fixed. These people do an exceptionally good job. They keep the place neat. If anybody's been down to that plant, they can attest to this. If they haven't, I suggest you go down there, wear your best clothes, don't worry about it, you're gonna be very impressed. It runs right, it runs efficiently, the budget is done according. The time that Darcy has and Carl have on their contract for overtime was three hours when they come in, bang, that's it. These people chose not to use this because they said they could do it within the two-hour frame and they thought taking that extra hour was a bit much, so they didn't. Thanks to our auditors, they now do because they were gonna get reported for not taking their time. And now we're complaining about overtime.
I'd like to give Ray one more chance, a minute.
Trying to be very brief here. What I would say is, the users, I'm a user. I've been involved with this project from its outset. I have never run a wastewater treatment facility. I've talked to the people at Williamsburg, I've talked to the people at Runland, John, I think it's Johnson City or someplace up in, up north. The overtime is not like it is here. We have three people. Does anyone remember that when this facility started, we were supposed to have a person and a half? This was primarily an automated facility. Now we're up to three people and they all had the same days off. It's not, that doesn't make sense. And we started out at what, 395? Any other user here know where we are right now? We're 456. And we don't, we don't get to see the budget. We don't get to see what's coming down the line. What we asked the select board to change the timeframe from February to March to December, January. Is that a big deal so we can put the figures in the book for you people? You make the decisions. What's wrong with that? I'm Jim Gilbert, I'm your town health officer and I was instrumental in bringing a wastewater system to the town. It's something that the town desperately needed. I can't imagine explaining to you the primitive conditions that existed in many, many parts of this town, where raw sewage was running into this stream and that stream and the other stream and the Hoosak River and down the sides of the roads and out to other people's lawns. We took a long, long time doing study after study. We got a system that cost this town next to nothing. Yes, it was very expensive, but it was still next to nothing for what we got. The state and the federal dollars that we picked up for that system were just unbelievable. And the system works. The water that comes out of that plant cleans up the water in the Hoosak River. The water downstream from the plant is cleaner than the water upstream because of the water that we're putting into the river. Pumps break. Pipes break. Connections get undone. And Darcy and Carl and Jeff are responsible for putting those things back together and fixing them. And I would like to see somebody take a 120-pound pump and haul it up out of a pump station by themselves. It takes two to tango. It takes two people to operate and maintain this system. And if we gotta pay them a little bit of overtime in order to do it, damn it, they deserve it.
I'd like to move on now if there are any other sections of the town report that people have questions on or Ray would like to make a comment on. If anybody would, just one minute. Yes.
Steve, will you just explain what happened with Dale's position now?
Do you want to come up and just, I didn't hear you.
She asked what would happen with Dale's position. When we lose a board member, we have to warn within 10 days of that process. We have done so. In doing so, we've come up into the March timeframe. We are now in that timeframe. There was no need of us to try to get a valid vote for an elected official on this at this point. We have a new board that'll be taking place tomorrow. At that point, they can either choose to go out for an election, hold a special election and vote a person in, or they can, as we have done in the past, appoint somebody to fill the position.
Thank you.
We're saving this for the people, being your new board is coming in within days.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions that the people here have of the select board or any other member sitting in these seats up here? Yes.
I have a question about that.
Can you just, the microphones, be sure that they can hear you. Would you please identify yourself?
Yeah, Harold Byrne. Harold Byrne, a question I have about filling the Smiley's wall. Is that, is that what we, help the voters?
She just, don't help me, yeah? Is that gonna be up for the voters? Can that, can that be a question the voters can answer on that or is that left entirely to the select board to determine that matter?
It is basically left to the select board unless the people petition to do a vote. If you're upset and you got a petition out, I forget, it's what, one-third? I forget what the number is, a couple hundred, a hundred and...
what the number is, a couple hundred, a hundred and something registered voters, petition to have a special election, you would have that. What you, what you would ordinarily do, and what we've done, in fact, what Dale did was fill Don Crowe's position. He was nominated by the select board in place at the time to fill what time was left by Dale, or by Don, and then Dale ran himself again the following year.
A question I have.
The question is...
Is there going to be a time limit to that? I mean, if you put a new board in tomorrow and they decide that they want to fill that position...
They will.
And they make that decision.
They do, yes.
Are they going to allow the voters time to bring a petition up?
If they decide to appoint somebody, they will do it.
Then that's a board decision, it's not a decision that the voters make.
But if you're, but if you're not happy with it, or if you want it done, you can petition the board to have a special election.
After you've already appointed somebody?
Well, you can have removed. But you gotta remember, these are expenses. When you have a special election, you have to set up for a special election, there's a cost involved.
Okay, that's all I ask.
So this is why, you know, there's a lot of controversy on asking the people what to do, and I, I'm a firm believer of this, but you can't ask them everything because every now and then, this is what a select board is hired for and brought into office for, is to make decisions for people. Now, we can't make them all, but we're sure going to make some who shouldn't be in the office, so, okay?
Excuse me, Margaret, would you like, can you address some of this?
I just wanted to say...
Why don't you get up on the microphone, Margaret? I'm sure, I'm sure most of you know Margaret.
Yes, Margaret Lilly. I was just wondering if the selectman's appointment to replace Dale Palmer isn't effective until the next election only.
Does everybody understand that? I'm not sure I do. They can only appoint for one year, so that appointment would be up at next year's election. Is that right? A special election would fill the rest of Dale's term, which would be two years. Margaret, is that about right, the way it goes? Okay, yes.
I'm David Fowle, Puttingstone Road. I'm feeling a little embarrassed that I am less educated than I would like to be in order to be a good citizen of this community. I've been trying to find who's running for the board and to see some statements about what their priorities are, what they'd like to see different, or whatever, so that I could go into the election tomorrow feeling educated, feeling like I'm making a worthwhile vote, and I can't find it. And I'm wondering if anybody can tell me where I could find this basic kind of information that I would think we would all need.
That's, that's a good question. Unfortunately, this is not the appropriate forum to answer that question. The town meeting is not a place, I, I understand, so... Right. I think that in most cases, those people that are, that are running for, for positions are at the polls. We have a number of them here tonight. I'm just trying to think of the best way to phrase this. Are you looking for the opportunity to speak to them personally?
I guess I'm making an assumption that most of the time, prior to an election, there's information that I could read.
I see.
And I've been searching for it. I've been looking on the banner, I've been looking on my Berkshires, I've been looking on the town website, I've been looking on the library website. It would seem like some information should be out there, and I haven't found it. I assume there must be some somewhere, so I'm just asking, where?
I, I'm not, that's, that's just Nelson or some of those people that are running.
I'm not Nelson Brownell.
I, I, to answer your question, I don't think there is any publication that has voiced the opinion of those people that are, that are running. It's something I think that certainly should be brought to the attention of the town and those people that are running for the offices, to let the people that are voting know where they stand on, on major issues.
Wasn't there something in the banner?
I don't think, I don't think for pound, if I, I don't think anybody... Rose, do you have anything like that?
No, I don't. I was just, I recall one of the early years that I was here, that we had forums. I think Ray Rodriguez moderated some of them, that were discussions among candidates, and maybe it would be, it's not helpful for this election, but it might be a good thing to reinstitute that for the future.
I think, I think that's a very good suggestion, and thank you for bringing that up. If you feel that way, I'm sure many others do also. Are there any other comments that anybody would like to make, either on the, on the annual report, or, yes, back there, I can't see who it is?
My name's Judy Greenbaum, and I want to know why every taxpayer in this town does not get an annual report. There are several people on our road that have not received books. And while we're lost taxpayers, she has never received a book in 15 years. It's amazing, the tax bills get to the houses, but the books don't.
I'm not sure how available this goes, we could have available this, but I'm mistaken. Were there registered voters running for our household? Where are those from there?
They're not getting them. People are not getting the books, and these people get their tax bills, and the money's expected, but they do not get the books. And that's been going on for a lot of, lot of years.
When Karen was saying this, if you have, is it true that you have to be a registered voter to get, you have to be a registered voter to be mailed the annual report? If you are a registered voter, I hope everybody does register to vote, then you will get one. If you are registered and you are not receiving one, and you are not receiving one, call the town office, and Karen or somebody there, I'm sure, will be sure that you, that you get, get a copy of it. There always are copies of it available at the town office. Charlie?
Yeah, I had somebody call me tonight, never got a town report. So I got my town report, and I read all the articles. So he'll be there to vote tomorrow. And one thing that I used to do when I was moderator, I believe after the meeting was adjourned, that any candidate could get up and talk once the meeting is adjourned, it's not a town meeting anymore, if the gentleman, the ones that are running for select man, could get up and talk. And before I sit down, "Great job, your system works very good." And sometimes I haven't had any problem tonight hearing, but sometimes I have.
That's, that's what I was suggesting too, if I see a number of people that are running for office, and once this meeting is concluded, I'm sure they would be more than happy to talk with you or anybody else about where they stand on certain issues. Why don't you just, those people that are, I don't think this breaks any rules, those people that are running for office, if you would just stand so that people can recognize you, and if you're available after the meeting, then you can see them. And maybe just to identify yourself?
Pat Percy, running for selectman for one year.
Nelson?
Nelson Brownell, running for selectman, three years.
Sue Karaman, tax collector for three years.
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Mary. Yeah, sorry.
Eddie Baker, selectman for one year.
Yes?
I'm George Selectman, for three years.
Rich Rider, selectman, one year.
If there are no other comments, I know, yes?
Do you think next year they take that print and that whoop a little bigger?
You are my talent.
You are.
Yes, Karen? Okay, wait, wait just a minute. Karen?
I was hoping Ray Mitty would address the rest of the errors in the town report that remain.
I'll give, I'll give you one to answer. It said the elected auditors were prevented from meeting with Representatives of Bonadino Incorporated, or Bonadino and Company, by the select board. I'd like to know where you get the information that you were prevented from that.
Steve, in response to that, we were at your meeting when Bonadino came with the draft of the audit, and I asked him why we were prevented from meeting with them, and you said that it was because it would be an expense to the town, so...
You must have missed something that I was over there. If I'm not mistaken, we had looked, and said you were there.
I worked with Bonadino, I'm the one that does a lot of the auditing. I have to be there for all the auditing with Bonadino, and actually, it was Bonadino that did not meet with you guys. It wasn't the board that told you you couldn't meet with them, and Bonadino made the choice not to. If, if you speak to them, that will be the answer you get.
Good, well, that clears it up. If there are any specific questions for them, such as that, this is the time to ask? Okay, page?
On page four, the town clerk's wages were listed at $23,973.14 plus fees. That was my mistake. Apparently Karen has notified me that her fees are included in that $23,000. Somehow she pays it to the town, and then it gets put through the payroll records of the town, because that's where the figure came from, from the payroll records. You get, you get paid a stipend of $10,400 and change per year, but you also collect fees during the course of your job.
You are right.
That is run through the payroll of the town. The town, you're, the town does not pay this.
The town does pay.
The town does not pay Karen's fees. Please understand that. What's listed in the budget as the town clerk expensed, the $10,000, is what the town pays with the taxes for Karen. And the, the same with Ellen, with the, well, with the delinquent tax collector. I believe that that was another question. The delinquent tax collector collects 8% of whatever the delinquent tax is. That money is paid to the town, and then we turn it over to Ellen, because she's the delinquent tax collector. It is not, that is not money that comes out of your tax dollars. This is money that Ellen collects, and, you know, if you look at the amount that she's making, you have to assume that she's doing a pretty good job collecting it, so... Are there any more questions about this payroll issues?
Okay, there is, there's quite a few errors on pages four and five, and I only briefly went through a few. First of all, we did not pay six selectmen in one fiscal year, we only paid five. Rich Rider took his, his money in July of this fiscal year, not last fiscal year, so that's an error. So actually, there was only 6,000 out of the budget, not 7,200. The auditor's fees, when you add up the auditor's amounts, it does not match the expenditure report. We are on accrual system, you can't go into our payroll system and get the correct numbers, and I'm assuming that's where they got their numbers, is they went directly to the payroll, and they didn't cross-reference our expenditure reports, which were audited by our outside auditors, Bonadino. My numbers are correct. There is, we, we covered Karen, we covered delinquent tax collector, let's see, animal control, the, the amounts do not add up to the expenditure report, the listers do not add up. Land Board, or the Development Review Board, one of those is off by 300, the transfer station is off, the wastewater facility, the highway, and there's a young lady who works, that does many jobs, and all hers don't add up correctly. So that's just page four and five. There are other errors. Rich Rider was not listed as a selectman on one page, although we did pay him. So, let's see, the rec, the rec, the rec department that works in the summer here through the school, but the town pays them, they weren't listed as employees of the town uponal also. They were left off. Linda Sharapas was incorrect, the administrative assistant. BCA under Julie Weber was incorrect. Janitor wages were incorrect. That all came off of, exactly, out of the payroll system, not out of the, off the expense report. They should have been cross-referenced and asked, because of the accrual, when, when, when you overlap, when you pay in June, when you pay at the beginning of July for June's wages, you have to accrue them back into when they happened. That doesn't happen in the payroll system, it happens in the direct... Right, but they have to be, you put that they were paid in the fiscal year. I understand that, I understand that. Okay, so, and then there, there is a, a couple of things that were left out in the expense report. I just have to find it, I'm sorry. Page 37, building maintenance. The actual expense report is $350, $650 is listed. Probably human error, and, and, and that does happen, and that's, I think, one of the subjects that we've been trying to talk about in the town office, is people do make human errors. That wasn't a big one, but it's just, needs to be proofread, that's all. And thank you. If you have any further questions, you can ask me after.
I think that there's, there's, there's a lot to the auditing, bookkeeping system, and obviously, the first time around for these people, it was not particularly successful. I just asked Ray and that they will make the necessary corrections, and there will be another statement of some sort issued that will have those correct statements that will involve all the participants, so that they agree on those statements, so we don't have this confusion again. I'm not, I can't give you time on that, but it, it will be done.
And Mr. Shields, this is your second year as auditor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes?
Angie Rowling, I was just wondering why you're putting people's names in. I understand I had it checked by a lawyer that it's legal, but it's not ethical. You can't put in what somebody owes for back taxes because they get too much information. I don't think it's proper for people's names in. On the school board, we don't put teachers' names down. We put them in groups, and I think that would help considerably here by keeping it into groups and not into people's names. That's too much information, and I think it could be misused, not in a good way. I mean, Ray, would you like to give out your information of what you made yearly?
No.
Of what you've made for the post office when you worked for 25 years? You're a federal employee. Thank you.
Are there any other, any other comments? I know the, yes, that, wait a minute, a lady here, they'll pull the帘.
I just have a comment about what happened.
Do you want to come up and?
Joyce Hall, I had a comment, and it might not work, it might work, about delinquent taxes. Years past, we were, you know, obviously, all paying a lot less taxes, and so getting a tax bill and paying it in full was maybe a little bit easier. Now, we're all facing thousands of dollars of taxes due right around Christmas time. We own property in Wells, and in Wells, we do four payments, so it breaks up that big lump sum in four payments. I, I, you know, right away, we probably got a problem. But I would just throw it out there as a suggestion.
Thank you. And we had a comment over here, just, yes. Do you want to come up with the microphones available?
I would like to know how much money was wasted in legal fees from the auditors with their false investigations with the town office. It was in the Bennington banner that the state police was investigating. I see $26,000 spent in legal fees out of our taxpayers' money. How much was spent because of the auditors? $26,000.
I understand that, but how much of that relates to the, to the situation we talked about? Do you really have Karen in your name?
Okay, thank you.
We have the right to know right now.
I don't, I don't, we don't know that. We don't know the fee.
Do what?
Do what? I, I just don't know. I don't want to come up with a fee that isn't accurate.
What about the auditors? Don't they know?
Wait, wait, wait. I've just made a statement. We don't know what those figures are. We'll try to get those figures for you, and when we do, they'll be at the town office. Right now, we don't know. And there's no way of trying to estimate what they would be accurate. I don't want to be something. Now, if there are no more comments on this, I know Bill Botso's here, and he's anxious to give us the report from the state. I don't want to cut anything off, but on the other hand, each of all have nothing.
It's good to see everybody. It's good to be what really is the heart of our democracy in Vermont, which is town meeting, and to hear everybody go through, you know, the issues of the moment, and it gives me a lot of confidence in the way we go about our business in Vermont. You know, when you think about it, and you're reading the paper today or looking at the news, just think of what it's like in the Ukraine right now. Thank God that we can come together. You know, towns, we're like families, and we may get after each other pretty hard, but when push comes to shove, we also help each other out. It's the fact that we're comfortable enough getting together and asking the hard questions that's part of our strength. So I just did want to comment on that. It's good to be home for the week. But to start off with, I have something a little special here. I think, you know, earlier, there was a mention of Doris Lilly in here retiring, but I have here a letter from the governor. It's addressed Doris Lilly. Dear Doris, congratulations on your retirement from the Town of Pownell. As governor, I speak for the state of Vermont in thanking you for your 33 years of service as a Pownell lister. Since 1981, you have worked tirelessly on behalf of the Town of Pownell. You have served the town through three townwide reappraisals, and during your tenure, helped transition lister records from handwritten cards to a computerized system. I understand you are considered an institution by your coworkers and town residents. I am pleased to join with your friends and colleagues in celebrating your career in public service. Your knowledge, experience, and dedication have made a real difference to those you serve. Thank you for a job well done. Sincerely, Peter Shumlin, Governor. I will, I will make sure that Doris gets that letter either directly or through Karen or those who see her practically every day. I just want a few housekeeping things. I brought the Doyle pole down again. It is over here, and I'll also have it at the polls tomorrow. I've sent you my email, all of those that get email. I've already sent you my town meeting report, it was a written one, but I also will have copies of it at the poll, and there's a few more over here. And you can read in much more depth than I'll go into right now. It's been a long evening. And I did want to touch on just a few things that you may not have heard, that I would bring to your attention. And one is that be aware that there will be spring road paving on US 7 from the Massachusetts border up to Bennington. And this is the road that I think we've worked hard to make sure is maintained well. And the strategy in the state now is if the road is in good shape, you try to keep it up rather than letting it go all the way down. And so I welcome that. It won't be a thick repaving, but it'll be a top coat to preserve it and keep us in good shape going forward. I must admit, on my drives from here to Montpelier and back, the roads from here to about Rutland are an awful lot better than they are from Rutland up to Montpelier. And I think they've done a good job in this part of the world. There's a lot of discussion on the wastewater earlier. Every year, you know, we try to report on, I want to make sure you know, in the capital bill this year, the state is once again paying the interest on the wastewater loan that the town carries, that $30,000. And also, earlier, it's a two-year budget, they paid down $500,000 on the state's share of that. And so that's coming along well, and everybody understands that obligation. We were able to secure a small grant for economic development, you know, down at the Hillside House. They're going to be opening a part of their store for more of wine, beer, cheese, all Vermont products there. And thanks to the town stepping up to be the sponsor of it, that was, went through our small community building economic development grants. I think it's a good thing. There are other economic development activities going on town. I'm pleased to see the progress on, for TAM, and that they tell me that they're very pleased with how the Development Review Board handled their case, and it went through quite quickly. And next, they'll be going through Act 250, and that has a promise of bringing jobs as well. We also know that there is the, I don't know if you call it animal shelter, whatever business coming along down here. These are all signs of a basic recovery that is coming along, but we also know that we do live in very challenging times. And I don't think we're going to see great rapid growth. That's probably just as well. Rapid growth leads to rapid declines as well. But unemployment is 4.5%. That's lower than the national average of 6.6, and it's the lowest rate in New England. We've basically returned the jobs that were lost during the recession. There was about 15,000 jobs that were down, and we've returned about 11%, and there's a pretty good, 11,000, there's a pretty good growth rate on that. The capital bill should create more jobs as well. Also, Vermont is a very entrepreneurial state. It ranks seventh in patents per capita, and it's in the top 10 on the Kaufman Index of Entrepreneurial Activity. We've also done a lot of work, as you know, on telecom and broadband, but I think we have a little more to go, even if we are at 92% of Vermonters having access to broadband right now. There's more to do in town here with wireless broadband build-out. That is not, state has no control. It's federal money and VTEL. Company doing that is, their deadlines are different than the 2013 that we set. We've done a lot of work on transportation. Our structurally deficient bridges have declined from 19% to just over 8% in 2013. And I don't think anybody wants a bridge to fall down on them. And the percentage of roads that are in poor, very poor condition, they went from more than half of our roads to 21%. But we do have really big challenges ahead of us. This year, working to create a balanced budget is very difficult. Part of the reason why is we don't have the federal money we worked with in the recovery for a number of years that helped us throughout the state a great deal. And we are also, when we look ahead, we do have some big risks. We know that federal cuts are going to be coming in the next five years. I think that's quite likely. We know that rising energy costs are going to impact many of our local programs, especially those that help low-income people with heat. And we know international economic instability can well affect exports and tourism. I think also, education right now is a big challenge for us. I think earlier there was a comment about the 7% of tax rate, and I think the comment was that was, you know, what the state did. And I'll tell you, in a way, I completely agree. Because when you say state, what that means is that every single school budget around the state goes to making up a pot of money that then sets that rate of the 7% growth. In fact, this year, the legislature has not voted on that 7% until the towns have had their vote. And I would like to remind you that even when the House does vote prior to town meeting, which it usually does, it didn't do this year, about five years ago, it didn't do it either. That is basically a proposition that goes all the way through the Senate, because it goes over, I mean, through the legislature, because it goes over to the Senate, and it's negotiated all the way. The legislature is very interested in what will happen statewide. I hope that people just really basically vote their conscience on the budget, and that they really think hard about it. I think that our education system is excellent. I heard the statistics that if Vermont was a country, we would be the 10th best education system in the world. And we are making progress in a number of ways. I know our town has made huge progress, and I know our school board has worked very, very hard, and I know that everybody is concerned. I think we're all so concerned about our education funding system. I am. I think you are. I've been thinking about it, and I think it was a system that was designed for basically what you would call good times, when the economy was expanding, houses were becoming more valuable, everything was on the rides, the populations were growing too. And I don't think it was designed quite for times like this, when we see declining populations in the schools, we see declining grand lists, and we see loss of federal dollars. So that puts us in the position of having to think hard about how we're going to cover the cost for what I know we all want. I know we all want to be excellent in education. If we had to choose one place, it would be education, and after that, it would probably be healthcare, because these are the serious issues that everybody faces in their whole life. So I wanted to comment on that. I'm looking forward to all the conversations I have with everybody and with others. And I can tell you that legislature is looking hard at proposals. They're looking hard at some governance proposals, and I can't tell you where I stand on them until they come out. I don't know where and how they will or where they will go, but they do change the governance system significantly from a supervisory union to a supervisory board. As I think we all well know, is that diligence, there would still be advisory boards for every school, but the diligence that the people in this town that you saw tonight overlooking at the dollars and caring about the kids is a big asset in our state. I think also of my other school, Woodford. And I know that if Woodford, the people there have a low tax rate, largely thanks to federal money from the state forest. But if you closed that school, what would happen is the people in the town would pay more money, and I think it's quite likely that the kids would not have as good an educational outcome because they're able to do things that no other school can. So we have to look at these things very carefully. We have to look at them together. We have to agree to share our best, our best thoughts together. And even if we clash and it's controversial, it's much better that we come together and talk hard our way through all of these things towards the future than just taking anything and everything for granted. And I look at it, you, I think I know everybody in the room. I've come to know you over the years, and what I see is all of you show up year after year after year because you care about the town. That's a great asset. You do this for all of the people out there. They care about the town here, too. They may not be here tonight, but you really are the core of the town, and I think it means a lot to me as the citizens and for all the people that you elect to represent you in all the various jobs that we do. So with that being said, I'm of course happy to take questions. I'm also happy to just let the questions you have come up informally. I will be here, probably the last person out of the room. We'll see you tomorrow, all day, too, except for a little time when I go up to Woodford. Finally, I would want to say, it remains to me a great pleasure and a great honor to serve you, and I greatly appreciate, you know, the support you've shown me over the years. And I think Margaret has a question.
I was wondering what the legislature is doing about school funding, other than consolidation of schools?
Well, the legislature is taking a thorough review on education on, I would say, on both sides of the question. I think when I talk to the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, that's the tax committee that basically handles the education funding, they would say for this year, maybe there's a little bit they can do, but they can't do a lot. But they have been looking at every single idea that they can and are working their way through that. I cover a lot more of it in my report. You know, there are ways you can probably help education funding. You could put another penny or two on the sales tax, but then that's just, you know, adding money to it. And I think really people are looking for a system that is less volatile, that they can afford. I think everybody knows we need young people to be educated. I think we all are looking forward to being well-served, whether it's in hospitals or schools or businesses in the future that's going to come from. I don't have right in front of me the list I have of about the 10 or 12 different items that they are considering as they go through it, but they're spending considerable time on them. On the other side of the fence, I said, on the policy side, many believe that the governance change would lead to some savings, but we don't know necessarily if that's true because of the way it would work. And you can think of examples of if you have two or three schools and you put them all together, usually the averaging goes up because the person at the top doesn't want to give up anything. So you can often end up spending even more money. So this is going to be hard work. And I think the legislature has it right, though. I think, you know, by listening to the citizens and how they want to vote on the town meeting before going ahead, it makes a lot of sense. Remember that seven-cent proposal is very simple. They aggregate all of the proposed budgets, do the math, divide it up, and basically say, if you're going to cover this amount of money, this is what the rate would have to be. Now it's up to us to try to move forward and to figure out what is acceptable, what is not acceptable, and what are the steps that we can take to address it. Again, thank you. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I think that, you know, the concern that many of us have is that, you know, where general state revenues decline, it ends up coming back on the property tax over. And that's, you know, that's the way it is. You have a declining population, you have a grand list that's going down, the money that comes into the state coffers isn't as much as it used to be. And therefore, it asks that we get, we used to have more federal funding too, but that difference has to, unfortunately, has to come back to the local property tax over. And that's a tough, tough road that the legislature has to try to look into. Everybody's in. One other comment, I just was asked, you speak for me.
I just wanted to comment on Joyce Held, if she's still here. I do take, the Town of Pownall does take taxes year-round, so if, we don't bill four times a year, we only bill once a year, but I have several people who are paying their current taxes year-round. So you're welcome to contact me if you wish to set that up. You don't have to set up a certain amount. You're welcome to pay, you know, you base it on your previous year's tax bill. Okay? Because they haven't been going down. I know they've been going up. So if everybody can just base it on that, and you're welcome to set that up with me. Like I said, I do have several people doing that. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Questions? Yes. Jim?
Jim O'Connor, a question for Bill on, hopefully, to get you to stay in a certain way on the government structure.
Get nice and close to them.
As I read the proposal for the government structure, it's already been approved by the governor and the House, and it's something that sounds like it's just going to happen. What happens is, in the state of Vermont, we would go to, right now, we have a supervisory structure, which is a partnership of all the local districts, including the town. Under this proposed government structure, government structure, there would be thirty supervisory unions, and the local boards would be dissolved. Now, Bill said it would be some advisory, but I didn't read that. There would be one supervisory union. The time that the state has taken over educational funding, the spending per pupil has exploded. You saw in our budget, I'm on school, but you saw tonight, the effective spending for this school is five million dollars a year for the finished year. That's all the federal money and the tax money, all sorts of money. That's twenty thousand dollars per student about, per town. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. And they're trying to get at reducing. What we've seen in the past is the more the state's gotten involved, you talk about the hard democracy being local control, right? It's scheduled now, per the governor, in two years, local control of this school is gone. It'll go to a supervisory union, which in the case of this area, it would be the same as the, it would be the same as the current supervisory union. The same would be Bennington, Chasmerie, Woodford, North Bennington, and Pownall, okay? Because the guideline for this government structure is a total of twelve thousand, twelve hundred and fifty students. We have in the area three thousand students. So it would stay the same numbers-wise, but there would be one board of directors, and it would not be Pownall. It would be, based in supervisory union would take over and eliminate all of those things. So as far as developing, a question for Bill is, please keep us posted on this. This is going to, what I read it as is we're losing local control, and I hope it will help us maintain local control.
Thank you for that. Basically, the first thing I think you should know is what is the status of the proposal. This proposal right now is in the House Education Committee. There really has not been a vote by any group or body within the legislature at this point. So it's preliminary. But this is a serious conversation and a real heads-up. It's also not a new conversation. This is a conversation that has gone on on our part of the state for a very long time about how you could or could not, you know, consolidate. The difference between a supervisory union and what's being talked about is a union is a collection of school boards supervised by another board, a school board. And that collection also includes your high school, your middle school. All of them have boards. And that is the way it is in our area. But it is different throughout the state. Sometimes, some of those supervisory unions are two schools. Sometimes, they're even one school. So there's this vast variation out there. And I think the real challenge is going to be is to see literally how things are going to play out from year to year, place to place. If this governance proposal happened the way they're talking about, and it's just talk at this point, there are leaves in the caucus discussions or whole House discussions in any way, is there would be a supervisory board for this area, and there would be supervisory boards around the state. And that board would have representation, voting representation from each town. You know this in the sense probably of kind of the way MAU does, that it would be pre-K through twelve. So they would be much bigger, you know, much bigger responsibilities. That would be the idea. But I think right now, if you ask me what's my position on it, would be, let's see, you know, people want, should look at things, but, you know, I would not overcommit on this one in any way at all. I do know that we do have to do something about it, the way our education system works. I think it's really important, you know, for all of us, for the health of our communities. And I'm going to be waiting to see what comes out, and, you know, how that moves along. I don't think anything has been particularly made up or decided, though I must say, our local school board members may be much, have their ear to the ground even better than I do because my job is chairing the Commerce and Economic Development Committee. And I hope you won't mind that I haven't told you about all the things that we've done in there this particular year, but I thought I would spare you tonight since it's been a long evening.
Thank you for both things, Bill. If there are no other questions, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
No.
Got a second? All in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.